In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, PL 1975, Chapter 231, adequate notice of this regular meeting of the zoning board of the township of Franklin's been provided. Board members, applicants, professionals, and members of the public, please speak directly into the microphones so that our recording secretary can properly process minutes. Applicants and professionals, please fill out the sheet on the table when you've completed your testimony. Thank you, and we'll continue with the roll call.
Okay. Faraz Khan and Chapindo Singh both asked to be excused this evening. Cheryl Bithia?
Here.
Richard Prokanic?
Here.
Basim Verdas?
Yeah.
Alan Rich?
Here.
Gary Rosenthal?
Here.
Robert Shepherd?
Here.
Michael Doherty?
Here.
Kunal Lakia?
And Chairman Thomas?
Here. Minutes, regular meeting, October 16th, 2025.
I'm off.
Second.
Cheryl Bithia?
Yes.
Richard Prokanic?
Yes.
Basim Verdas?
Yes.
Alan Rich?
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal?
Yes.
Robert Shepherd?
Yes.
Michael Doherty?
Yes.
And Chairman Thomas?
Yes, and next would be a resolution establishing the 2026 Board of Adjustment Calendar.
Last night, they did a general poll, like you just said, does everybody agree? So I don't have to go down line, unless, Brian, you would like for me to do that.
No, no.
Okay, so I did check with our regu-- some people on the both boards to make sure that I was not incorporating any holidays or religious reasons not to have a meeting on Wednesdays or Thursday, and it just so happens in 2026, none of them affect those days. So everything that's on the calendar that you got, we should have meetings on. There should be no reason to not have them, or to make something different.
Okay, if there are no questions, comments, or proposed adjustments, we'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed. Motion passed. We have no discussion section here, other than what goes with each individual applications. The first hearing on the agenda, proposed hearing, I'll say, 11 properties, ZBA 240001. It's a preliminary and final major site plan with variances which applicants propose to construct a four-story apartment building at 940 Eastern Avenue Somerset, block 385, lot 2.07 in the GP zone. This has been postponed tonight, as it has been a couple of other previous times. It's carried tentatively to March 19th, but everybody, the public, needs to be re-notified. Next was Somerset Bible Baptist Church, 250004, C and D variances in which the applicant's asking permission to build a one-story, 35-foot-tall, 8,640-square-foot gymnasium at 42 Cedar Grove Lane, block 424.02, lot 12.02 in the R-40 zone. This also has been taken off the agenda tonight and carried to February 5th, 2026. In this case, this is the notification, no further notification needed, carried to February The application we will hear, Manjit Singh and Ravinder Khawar, ZBA 240011, site plan with use variance and C variances in which the applicant's proposing to convert the existing repair garage into a convenience store at 339 Elizabeth Avenue Somerset, block 493.01, lot 1 in the R-10 zone. So if we can get everybody up here for that, this was carried from November 6th, 2025, and in this case, we need evidence of notification?
I think that was provided.
It's all provided?
Yes.
Okay, very good. And again, it's been a while since we heard anything, so I think, from the board's point of view, it'd be wise if you could give us a quick synopsis of where you think we are.
Okay. Michael Salvaggi from Labor Salvaggi and Cohen, on behalf of the applicant, the chair is right, it's been some time. Last time we were here, we presented the project as described by the chair, and there were some issues raised by board members and the board's professional staff concerning internal traffic movements, parking, and some of the interior layout. So following that meeting, we went back and kind of sharpened our pencils. We also had an opportunity to meet with Mr. Healy and a few other municipal officials to get some ideas of what might be a more practical approach to this. I think all of you are aware of the property. I mean, it's kind of small, probably not much bigger than this room, and its triangular shape presents challenges, as well as the existing building and the layout of the gas pumps. But we were able to do some things that our engineer will discuss in greater detail, as were described in the Board Engineer's Report, as well as Mr. Healy's report. Most importantly, we were able to provide some additional parking. We also closed off some entrance points, which help better direct the traffic circulation in and out of here. Everything will come on and off of Elizabeth. We were also able to relocate the dumpster, and by doing that, we took a site that has over 90% coverage, we got it down to about 70%. We were able to add some parking that's not there. And most importantly, we were able to keep what was our original intention, which was to get rid of that unsightly mechanic automobile repair shop, fix up that building so it's aesthetically a heck of a lot more pleasing, provide a use that, quite frankly, as Mr. Healy noted in some of his photographs, I don't know if he did it intentionally, but right now, the use, you know, the mechanic parks on the road, customers park on the road, all of that will, should be eliminated. I mean, obviously, you can't stop people from parking there, but at least there's enough parking on, internally, that that should not be an issue. And also, by eliminating the access and keeping it concentrated on that one side, also provides a safer alternative. So on balance, you know, you're getting a site right now that's not very efficient, it's not aesthetically pleasing, you know, it's grandfathered in, we get it, but we're hoping that with these improvements, it's a site that you'll find certainly more compatible, if you will, with that R-10 zone. Understand, the R-10 zone only allows residential, but even that, which is a permitted use, it'd be tough to get a house on this lot. But we're able to overall improve this to a point that makes some sense, and certainly, you know, as they say, you can't make a purse out of a sow's ear, but we're trying to get close here on this. So what I'd like to do, Mr. Chairman, is a lot of the overview that I've given, our engineer, who was instrumental in preparing the plans, can go into some greater detail. In the course of doing that, issues raised by Darren and Mark, we'll also discuss those as well. And then, some of the internal traffic circulation, Gary Dean, who's our traffic consultant, can also kind of expand upon. So if the board would like, I'd like to get into that, because you probably want to hear from those guys more than you want to hear from me.
Okay, it's your application. Go ahead.
Okay. So, and I defer to Board Counsel. Everybody we're presenting has testified, well, except maybe our planner, but I don't know if we have to put them under oath.
They're still under oath, to the extent that they've testified before. Anyone that hasn't testified before, obviously, would be under oath.
I will, okay. And Tyler, while you're getting situated, since you were here last time, your license is still in good standing, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
All right, good. So, and Tyler, you were instrumental in the preparation of the initial set of engineering plans, correct?
Yes.
And you oversaw the preparation of these revised plans, correct?
Yes.
All right, and I know--
So let's, before we move forward, just so the answer, he has to speak to the mic.
Yes, I was just gonna ask that.
So for the record, the answer to all of your questions were yes, just for the record, because we have a recording secretary.
Yes, that's correct.
And I'll take this one.
Okay, all right. There we go. And to the extent it may not have been picked up, Tyler, since you were here last time, your license is still in good standing, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And you still consider yourself under oath, correct?
Yes.
All right, why don't you take us out on what really is a new site plan, and what were some of the improvements, and what were some of the objectives we were hoping to achieve by doing that?
Before we go any further, I can't really see very much, except something of a design through that.
We're gonna hook it up.
So I was hoping we could get something on our screens.
We're doing that right now.
Also, is this the version of your site plan? From when? What's the month?
This is October 13th of this year.
Okay.
And this was the, the board's professional reports, both your engineer and plan are both reference and relied upon these drawings.
Mr. Salvaggi, I know this is part of your application materials, but we should, since we're putting on the screen, we'll mark it as an exhibit. I don't remember where we left off last time.
Yeah, I don't remember either.
But we'll call this, for tonight's purposes, A1.
Yeah, we'll call it A1, and we'll put the date of December 4.
Sure.
All right, so, I don't know if you can, you guys okay with where we have it?
Yeah, that one's not working, but we've got three out of four, so--
Okay. All right, that's, that's fine. So hopefully, Mr. Shepherd, you can--
Yes.
Yeah, that's the only one that's not, the one closest to you is the one that's not working.
Right.
All right, so Tyler, why don't we get into, and again, I know it's kind of a revision, but the property's small enough, kind of just almost start from the beginning.
Sure.
Not talking about what was presented, but what we're doing now.
Right, absolutely, okay. So yes, we have this unique-shaped property, it's this triangle shape, has fronts on three different streets. We have Elizabeth to the west, Cedar to the east, and we have Mercury Street to the south. So we have a lot here that's confined by three front yards, and then a side yard, which is to the rear of the existing building, bordering the residential properties to the north. As was discussed, the site currently contains a maintenance garage and the fuel cells. The fuel cells consist of the canopy, there's two dispensers beneath that canopy, as well as a kiosk between the two dispensers. The fuel portion is all intended to remain, no changes to the fuel sales, number of dispensers, type of fuel being sold. Same thing goes for the underground tanks that serve the dispensers, those were just put in a few years ago. So those are staying, existing as they are, no change there. What this really comes down to is a change of use to the main building, principal building, from the maintenance garage into a convenience store. The architect previously presented the plans whereby the bay doors would be closed off, replaced with windows, a number of other beautiful improvements to the building, as far as the siding, additional windows, et cetera. What I wanted to focus on here was really the function of the site. This was largely what we discussed at the last hearing. We did go back to the drawing board, submitted a new drawing, there was comments from your professionals whereby we decided not to come back with that plan, and instead went back to the drawing board again, and had a meeting with those professionals. So we've arrived at a place here which we feel probably presents the best circulation for the site, certainly from a safety perspective, and a vast improvement over what we're seeing today. So as was mentioned, we have two driveways existing off of Cedar to the east of the fuel sales, in the existing condition, and two to the west on Elizabeth Avenue. The intent of this plan is to close off both driveways off of Cedar, so all circulation would come in and out off of Elizabeth, and then we have this simple loop structure of circulation, two-way circulation around the fuel pumps, or underneath the canopy, depending on what your purpose for visiting the site is. And then along the perimeter of that circulation, we have parking provided. What this allows for is a number of things. Cleaner circulation, where we don't have vehicles coming from every which way. It also provides much better drive aisles, as you recall during the first hearing, there was some significant deviation from the standard of the municipality, which is 26 feet. We are now providing 24 feet. We recognize that's still a variance, but akin to industry standard, as far as two-way traffic flow. What we have here is the main parking bank is immediately in front of the building. There would be a sidewalk immediately outside the front door with a six-inch curb. That sidewalk loops around to the east and continues down that bank of parking to connect to the public sidewalk along Cedar Avenue, and within that sidewalk, we have our ADA ramp to our handicap spot directly in front of the building.
Okay, so, so I'm, I'm trying to follow this, and you've, you've got the building, and then the building kind of juts out, and it comes around, there's, there's some angled lines on a parking space, is that your ADA space?
That's the hatching, right, that's the walking aisle next to the handicap space.
Okay, and then, and then you've got, I guess those are the doors in and out, and then you've got a sidewalk that comes down all the way to--
Cedar.
Cedar.
Yes.
All right, and how many spaces are there?
So directly in that bank of parking is four spaces.
Four altogether, including the handicap?
Correct.
Okay, and then, where are the rest of them?
So then we have three additional spaces in what I'll call the point of the triangle down towards Mercury.
How do I do for a segue for that, right? I asked the right question?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, great, that's exactly where I was heading. So then we have the three spaces down there on the south side, and then we have an additional stall, which is to the west of the building, near Elizabeth Avenue. That's next to the loading space. We've provided for a loading spot directly adjacent to the building on that west side, where the refuse enclosure is proposed.
Okay, so there's like a one in a circle, that's where the space is?
Yeah, one parking spot there, and then the bigger spot next to it is the loading stall.
Oh, loading, is that like for the refuse?
That would be for refuse pickup, that would also be for box trucks making deliveries.
Okay.
There is a back door on that side of the building with little, you'll see a little sidewalk ramp there.
Yep.
And so they would be able to bring deliveries into the storage room, soda, chips, that sort of thing.
Okay, so, okay, well, there's no sidewalk that goes from where the four spaces are down to where the three spaces are, right?
Only on, if you walked on Cedar, that would be the--
So there's a sidewalk on Cedar?
Correct, yes, there is.
Okay, see, okay.
Yeah, so there's sidewalk on all frontages around that entire peninsula, is public sidewalk.
All right.
So our total count with the parking, then, we have a provision of eight stalls, which of course is a variance. The ordinance actually requires 18 stalls, but the reality is, and our traffic consultant will get into this, four of those requirement have to do with one stall per fueling position, which is a bit unconventional, because if you're, if you're getting fuel, you usually don't need a parking space. But based on the building itself, 13.5 stalls for the retail use, and again, we're providing eight, if you wanted to provide a credit of four for people leaving their car at the pump while they run inside, you know, then maybe you're looking at 12. But a variance either way, our traffic consultant will provide justification for that. We've also provided for, and I'm sorry, I was moving this around, I didn't realize everyone's looking at, everyone's probably getting dizzy. Moving down to the third sheet here is the landscape plan, and what you can see there that I want to highlight is really that we're infilling with a whole lot of green space. I know it was mentioned in the introduction where we're coming from, 90%, 97%, almost 98% coverage on this lot, down to just a little over 70%. Yeah, 70 and a half percent, so a significant reduction. The goal with the landscaping plan is to infill that with a whole lot of landscaping. We have a number of shade trees here, specifically along Cedar, as well as lower shrubs to shield the parking, and then larger evergreens to the side to shield that residential property. But really softening the look largely off of Cedar, where all the residences are. And then lighting really is unchanged from the original application, other than maybe a pole shifting here and there, but we have the lighting at the underside of the canopy, a couple of building-mounted fixtures, and then a few poles throughout the parking lot.
And what about the dumpster? There was an issue raised about the screening, or--
Right. Yeah, so of course, the ordinance would contemplate that the dumpster or the refuse enclosure would be put in an area that's not highly visible. This is a unique law, as we said, we have frontage on three properties, so we don't have a location that's accessible to a truck that's not in a front yard. So you can see we're providing it there to the west of the building, again, trying to keep it towards the more busy county road, as opposed to the residential neighborhood to the west. This would be enclosed with a fence and surrounded by landscaping to provide further screening.
And, and the landscaping--
Wait--
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Where, where's the dumpster gonna be? Is it gonna be over toward Elizabeth Avenue?
Correct, so that loading zone that we talked about earlier, it's right at the tail end of that, the north end of, of the loading zone.
Okay.
You can see that we have an enclosure with two separate dumpsters in it. Today, the dumpster sits on a concrete pad off of Cedar, so the pickup isn't even done from the parking lot, it's done from the street. So we're gonna eliminate that and bring it towards Elizabeth instead of Cedar.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
And the, and the landscaping to the back, there was a comment in Mr. Healy's report about six-foot evergreens, that certainly, the applicant would agree to plant those evergreens, correct?
Yes.
And with respect to, there was an issue raised about the use of the American elm.
Yeah, I was surprised that you guys had chosen that particular--
Yeah, and we'll, something that, I mean, we could put an alternative, Tyler, if you have an alternative, or we want to rely on Mr. Healy's recommendation--
Yeah, we could certainly switch that out with something that is preferred.
Okay. Now, in the Board Engineer's Report, there were some comments made, and you had an opportunity to review all of these reports, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Was there anything in terms of Darren's report that you take issue with, or we can't achieve, based on this plan?
Yeah, I think all the engineering requests, we certainly will work to make those changes, and are happy to address those comments. The one comment that I would just seek clarification on before it gets put in a resolution, if this goes that direction, is about the moratorium on Cedar. I guess my concern being, we wouldn't want to hold up the applicant from proceeding, maybe something could be held in a bond for those curbs to be replaced later.
So typically, what happens is you'll go to the Department of Public Works, if this is approved, and they have additional requirements on a road opening. That's in a moratorium, involves infrared repairs, as well as the limits that would be determined by the DPW director.
Okay.
So it wouldn't necessarily stop you, but there would be some extra hurdles for you to do at that point.
Sure, okay, understood.
And, and by the way, because it was in both Mr. Healy's report, as well as Darren's, the layout, the interior traffic circulation, you designed that so it would be able to accommodate a WB50 vehicle, correct?
Right, yes, that would be the delivery vehicle of the fuel, and we prepared an exhibit on Sheet 4 of the plans, where we basically showed different design vehicles maneuvering the site. We had a fire truck, box truck delivery, the refuse truck for the garbage pickup, and then, most importantly, the, the fuel delivery vehicle, being able to maneuver the site without hopping curbs, or running into parking areas, things like that, so. Even, just showing that even with the changes, modifications to the layout, closing of the driveways on Cedar, those deliveries can still be made as they are today.
That's kind of a, again, there's not a lot going on, and this site is kind of small. I mean, that was kind of the highlights, but certainly Tyler can answer any questions that board members may have.
Board, any questions?
I've already asked mine.
Just so, as a reminder, how many parking spaces are you gonna end up with?
Eight total.
And you required 18.
The ordinance stipulates 18.
How's that gonna work, though?
Yeah, so again, our traffic consultant will have more detailed numbers on how this works with this specific type of use versus what the ordinance requires, but just generally, again, there's a requirement for one stall per fueling position, which, again, people who are fueling park at the pump, so that's not really practical. And then as far as the convenience store, it considers the entire footprint of the building, not actually just the retail space, so there's office, there's a large storage component, which isn't seeing retail traffic. So while the ordinance would stipulate that amount, practically speaking, we don't anticipate that to actually be the need, and our traffic consultant will get into that more detail.
Any board questions?
Just an actual overall question on the application, is the, is the architect here tonight?
No, we, there was, one was away, and the other one has an injury, so--
Okay.
But the architectural plans haven't changed from what you saw last?
Well, that was, that was the first question, frankly, because the first, my recollection is that the, the plans that are on record are, I guess, the original plan that, I recall, had, basically had like a flat roof, and then at the, and then at the first hearing, the architect presented as an exhibit, a change, you know, and it was presented to the board, you know, for the first time as an exhibit with a, with a peaked roof. So it was, my question is, what, what's the proposal?
It's the peaked roof.
Okay, and then, I don't recall, because it was a while ago, there are a bunch of architectural-related design standards. I don't remember, did he even testify to that, or did it stop? But otherwise, if he, if he didn't testify to that, there's a number of architectural-related design standards that haven't been testified to. Those are in my report.
Yeah, no, no, understood. We, we had thought that Mr. Byrne had, when he was here last, had touched upon the, those architectural design standards. If we're mistaken, I mean, I get it, it was some time ago.
Yeah, we can review the minutes and see, but, so why don't we move forward, and we'll just, we'll look at those minutes.
You said the ordinance was for 18 parking spots, assuming that all of the building is retail, but in actuality, part of it is, is not retail, it's an office and storage space. So based on how much of it is actually retail, how many parking spots would you have needed?
That's not how the ordinance works. I mean, the ordinance is, is based on the square foot, it takes that into account. I mean, every retail establishment is going to have an office component, is going to have storage spaces, is going to have bathrooms, so the parking requirement for the retail is based on the gross square footage.
Okay.
I just wanted to make sure it just didn't go down an angle that is not--
Yeah, no, since he brought it up, I was wondering if this is atypically larger, one versus the other, or, since you brought that up as a reason, I just was clarifying that.
As far as most of this client's other projects that I work on, there is a little bit more storage here than I would typically see, but just given because this building is larger than, than most of his sites, and we're dealing with the existing building. So yes, I would say there is a larger storage component than we typically have. So yes, I would say there is a larger storage component than we typically have, but, well, as far as the convenience store demand for parking as opposed to just general retail that the ordinance contemplated, I'll defer to the traffic engineer.
Okay, thanks.
Now, maybe I'm confused. Did you say that you, there was one parking space that you were counting that was actually a fueling spot?
No, I, what I was, what I was indicating was, the ordinance requires one stall per fueling position as part of the parking requirement. So in other words, if you have a place where a car can fuel, they also need a parking space somewhere else on the site.
Okay.
Practically speaking, that's not actually, that doesn't actually function that way, because if someone's getting fuel, they're in the position getting fuel, not in a parking spot. So in essence, the fueling position acts as the parking spot.
Okay, I got it.
It's more of an argument for the variance than meeting the technical definition of the code.
Just two questions for me.
Yes.
First, I know you said that you could comply with my letter. The one thing I wanted to touch on is if the board act favorably would be, would the applicant have any opposition to putting in a four-foot-high fence for screening headlights? I know you have shrubbery there, I've seen that before in the past, and what happens is sometimes it either dies, or cars, people run over it, and we lose that buffer, so we want to make sure that we don't transmit any headlights.
That's fine, we would put the fence in.
Okay. And the second is, I know you mentioned the largest vehicle's gonna be a WB-50. What are the anticipated times of delivery, and how many times a week do you expect that truck coming?
So the fuel delivery, I believe on this station, you're probably looking at about two to three times a week. The times can be scheduled, so if the board wanted to stipulate something, but certainly it wouldn't be overnight, it would be during business hours.
And we could do earlier in the morning, which, you know, is more convenient.
Yeah, you want to avoid when the convenience store's at its busiest point for fuel, because it's gonna jam up the whole site.
Sure.
Yeah.
I know you said that you provide, you're providing space so that that truck, fuel delivery truck has access and it can be accommodated, but when it's actually there and refilling tanks, how does that affect a customer coming in and, or customers coming in and out and parking?
It would certainly be impacted. I mean, that is the case pretty much with any station unless you're talking like a big Wawa or Quick Check where they have their tanks in a fairly remote spot. But, the fuel under the canopy, we're not intersecting with that space, so vehicles could still get back and forth in that area. Otherwise, instead of doing a loop of circulation in and out, there's a chance they need to exit back out the driveway they came in. There would be a level of interruption, they typically put cones out, there's more direction from the employees that are around at the time trying to direct traffic, but there certainly would be an impact.
So it is rather important to the functioning of the whole site that the truck deliveries... It would be helpful if they could be scheduled for particular areas, times that are off-peak, and how much control does this operator of this facility have over that?
Yeah, my understanding is that they do have control, you know, not to a specific minute, obviously, but if you were to give a few-hour window, my understanding is that's typically doable with the way that they order the deliveries.
Okay. Other board questions? Okay, we will open to the public. This part of the meeting is, should be devoted to members of the public asking this witness questions based on his testimony. There is an opportunity coming to state an opinion later in the hearing, so is there anyone in the public who wishes to question this witness? Okay, if not, we'll, if you're finished, we'll move to the next one.
Yeah. Yeah, you can just leave it there. Our next witness is Gary Dean, who was here previously, and Gary, since you were last...
Actually, I wasn't. My partner, Ben T. Dolan, was here, so...
Oh, that's right. Mr. Dean, if you can raise your right hand, thank you. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give before this board, is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Can you just repeat your name, spell your last name for the record, please?
Certainly, it's Gary Dean, D-E-A-N. I am a principal with Dolan and Dean Consulting Engineers in Somerville, New Jersey. I'm a licensed engineer in the state, and my license is current and in good standing, and I've appeared before this board at some point over the past forty-two years. I forget which application, candidly, there have been many.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Dean, you've had an opportunity to review the revised engineering plans that Tyler's prepared, correct?
I have.
And what's your opinion on the adequacy of the site vis-à-vis traffic and parking, given the proposed modifications?
There are certain existing conditions on the site that limit, quite frankly, how much can be done. The canopy exists, the underground storage fuel tanks exist and were replaced fairly recently, and the repair bays exist. So you have three major components, and I'll refer to the exhibit, up at the very northern end, we have the existing building. There are three repair bays. Vehicles routinely are stored awaiting repair along Cedar. I think Mr. Healy's report reflects that, so the building can't move. Similarly, the canopy, which is now more in the middle of the site as I'm moving the cursor, that currently exists as well. And then we have the third component, which is the underground, you don't see it unless you know to look for it, but it's a big concrete pad with the fills for each tank all the way at the southern end. So, those are there, and there's very little, there's no flexibility to move those, the station exists and it operates. We had a meeting with Darren and Mark, maybe a month, month and a half ago, we, as always, appreciate their time and input, and we were directed, as Tyler indicated, to go back to the drawing board and make it a little bit better. If the board members recall, the original plan had six spaces where I'm indicating along Cedar that were generally perpendicular to Cedar, they were head-in, closest to the Mart building, but we had left a driveway on Cedar open. And recognizing the sensitivity of the receptors, the homes across the street, we were asked and charged with, can you make it better? Can you improve on the layout to give us bigger buffer, to reconfigure the parking, and most importantly, get rid of all driveways on Cedar? And we've done that. So as a result, as Tyler has described, there are four spaces closest to the building, one at the very northern end next to the refuse enclosure. I should also point out to the board, the existing refuse enclosure is right on Cedar, where I'm indicating in the very northeast corner. When it's served, the truck has to come up Cedar and then pick up that directly from the street itself. And that was feedback we took from the last meeting, to relocate that to a more appropriate location. The hardship we have, and you'll hear from our planner, is the unique shape of the lot, it's triangular, and three of its frontages are street frontages, meaning the only other place to put it would be directly behind the building, but that has access limitations for trucks and certainly doesn't allow for, I'd say, protecting more of the residential buffer to our east and to our north. So in terms of circulation, we're retaining two driveways along Elizabeth. Traffic, just as it does today, can come south and turn left and come right to the dispensers, and then go right back out the southerly driveway, or same thing in the northbound direction, a right turn in, hit the dispensers, and then circulate to the northern driveway and turn left and right. It's not a busy station. We submitted a traffic study, the total volume in the morning is about twenty vehicles, and in the afternoon peak hour, it's about thirty. So, one car every two or three minutes. It's certainly not a highway or high-volume station like we would have with Quick Check Wawa, or even Nationals. I know, for example, I forget what brand it is now, the Exxon at Cedar Grove in Easton, that's a busy site. The Quick Check right off the highway is also a busy site. This, by contrast, is a neighborhood site and does probably a fifth of the volume of those higher locations. So, in terms of parking sufficiency, in my career, I've done a lot of these, they're known as bay conversions, for the major oil companies, Shell, Exxon, BP, and the like. The buildings themselves are very small, typically fifteen hundred, two thousand, twenty-five hundred square feet, we're right in line at just over two thousand. And because, as you've heard, architecturally, much of that building is comprised of storage, of ADA-accessible restrooms, and an office to run the building. That would exist irrespective of the conversion to change it to bay. So the actual footprint of the retail area is pretty small. It's, we call them mini-Marts. I don't have the exact number from the architectural plans, but it's roughly a thousand, maybe twelve hundred square feet. Candidly, you just can't fit a lot of merchandise in there. As soon as you put in a cooler, that chews up some of that square footage, so it's left to principally convenience items, snacks, candy, gum, maybe prepackaged baked goods, occasionally prepackaged sandwiches, things that are found in most gas station-affiliated convenience stores. As a result, and I'm getting to the punchline, these don't generate a lot of parking demand. It's usually, particularly on the ones that have been converted, they typically have five to six parking spaces. That's all you need. Part of the reason is, as Tyler explained, while you're waiting to fill your car, many customers just walk to the Mart, get their soda, their snack, their quarter milk, what have you, and by the time they're back, the car is done, and then they leave. Some customers will come in specifically for the store, and for that reason, we've increased the parking supply to make it accessible directly to the building. And we have five very close, or on the west side and south side of the building, and then we have the three down in the point of the triangle, which I would recommend are used for the employees. One in the store, one running the pumps, and that leaves one extra space for overflow. Though, we're not needing it for our site, much like the parking that occurs today, the entire site frontage along Cedar allows for on-street parking, it's not prohibited. Now, in our traffic counts that we did, we only saw one car come into the site from Cedar. So, we're not expecting anyone to park on Cedar, but if you're a local resident from that neighborhood, it certainly would be very convenient to park, walk right in, and then turn around and go back home, instead of having to come out on Elizabeth and then go back out onto Elizabeth to go back up Cedar. So, it exists, and we don't affect that, that would be governing body, I mean, in terms of whether its use is continued or subsequently prohibited. But I'd be remiss if I didn't at least acknowledge, and I would say you could probably fit eight vehicles along that curb frontage. So as we start to look at, what is our actual parking supply? Yes, we have eight fixed spaces, we have four, I'll say, dual-purpose spaces at each dispenser, or fueling position, forgive me, for, that's twelve, and then whatever can, could fit on Cedar, again, we're not relying on it, we're not using it in our count, but I can't put the blinders on it, it is publicly accessible parking. So on balance, I've also visited the site. Candidly, it's a bit of a nuisance. There are a lot of cars parked along the frontage on Cedar awaiting repair. One of the challenges with repair bays is vehicles are often left for many days, they're disabled, they're awaiting parts. There's storage of waste, mufflers, brakes, things that require disposal, and more activity associated with parts deliveries just to run that function. And then we have the noise aspect. We know that air tools are, they're loud, and, you know, hammering and the like that goes on with automobile repair certainly has an impact. All of that would be cured with this application. Is it perfect? It is not. We need a lot of relief, but the site today, let's say, let's say we're not successful here tonight, the station just, it's there and it's functioned for, I looked at some aerials, this station has been in existence since at least nineteen sixty-three, I believe. So it has a sixty-three-year history when there were no homes around it. The neighborhood has grown around it, that is true. And as we look at it, and you'll hear from our planner, getting rid of those nuisances with auto repair, getting rid of the vehicles parked all along Cedar, some of which are trucks, I think on balance, and getting rid of the driveways, combined with the landscaping and the aesthetic improvements, on balance, at least from a traffic engineer's perspective, certainly makes this a better site and redirects all of that activity out towards Elizabeth. With that, I think, and again, we appreciate the staff's attention and input on this design, but there are very few options in terms of getting creative with where to fit things, but in my opinion, having done probably a hundred and fifty different service stations, I would say for a low-volume neighborhood station, this meets the typical design standards. We are seeking relief, I believe, for one area where we have a twenty-four-foot aisle, I'm highlighting it with the cursor. That area's dimensioned is twenty-four feet, but it's to the edge of the canopy. There's another eight feet that exist between the edge of the canopy and where the fuel dispensers are, so it's actually thirty-two feet. As Tyler indicated, most contemporary design standards are twenty-four-foot aisles. And I say that because streets, two-way streets, are designed in width anywhere from twenty feet to twenty-four feet and upwards. So for two-way traffic flow at a very low volume and a very low speed, twenty-four feet is more than sufficient, in my professional opinion, to accommodate the parking and de-parking maneuvers of each of those four parking spaces. And then we have twenty-four feet for the remaining three, and then well in excess of twenty-four feet for the one space to the north. So, I think appropriate justification exists, the compromise would be to lose a parking space and also decrease the buffer towards Cedar if we were to comply at twenty-six feet. And I think the hardships associated with the, with the shape of the property and its geometric properties allow for that relief to be granted with no detriment to overall circulation. And that's all I have in the way of, I'll say, additional testimony, and I know a lot of ground was covered by my partner at the last hearing, but I'd be happy to address any concerns or questions the board may have.
Any board questions?
I have a couple of questions. So just to be clear, you're not providing planning testimony?
I am not, we have a planner.
Okay, because a lot of the testimony was very planning-oriented.
I am a licensed planner...
I see that.
But I'm not, I'm not qualified tonight, I'm just...
Okay, understood.
I'll say buttressing what I expect will be the planning testimony with traffic.
Sure. So the one thing, I guess my general question is, what's the justification for the parking variance?
We don't need that many spaces. Your ordinance has a one-size-fits-all for all retail, and that's retail and service, it's one per two-hundred, even for shopping centers, I haven't seen five per thousand for, you know, a million-square-foot mall in twenty years. In this instance, given the actual size of the retail area, which, again, this application, we're still gonna have that component of office, restrooms, and storage, just to run the service station. If I look at what the retail component is, in my opinion, we meet what is necessary, given the unique, excuse me, the unique aspect of this particular use, we have, in effect, nine spaces.
So it's more, I think it's adequate. What about ITE? Is there any literature and any reference manuals within the industry that you can refer to?
It's lower, yes.
But what is it? It's not in your report?
It's not in our report. I don't recall offhand, but I recall it being somewhere around eight.
But it's not in your testimony, and it's not in the report.
It's in my testimony, which I just indicated, so eight is appropriate. From practical experience, we've seen five or six being used.
No, I'm asking about ITE or a reference manual relative to the industry.
As I said, I don't have that with me, I'm going by...
I understand, but that's kind of the, I think, the predicament that us as a board is in. I agree that the parking requirements for the township are a bit robust and then a bit dated in the one per two-hundred, whatever, but there hasn't been anything other than, in your professional opinion, which obviously carries a lot of weight, but...
I'm going by a lot of experience with, like I said, about a hundred and fifty service stations. The basis for ITE is people like my... The basis for ITE is people like my office going out, doing the studies, and then submitting the data to ITE. So, whether it's me or other traffic consultants, that's how that reference material is compiled. In this instance, as we start to look at the use, and I do understand what Mr. Healy's position, it's kind of odd to have to provide one parking space for things like a restroom and storage areas. But your ordinance, by its literal interpretation, requires that, and it's a little challenging to apply an ordinance standard for something like ShopRite, which has a lot of retail area, not so much, it has storage, but not a lot of restrooms, whereas the percentage of this building that is occupied by those non-retail components, in my opinion, over-exaggerates the required parking. So, by way of example, let's assume we had 1,000 square feet of retail area, excepting your ordinance at five per 1,000, that's five, and then your ordinance requires one space for each dispenser. Technically, that's two. So, if I look at the ordinance, that means it's seven, and we have eight. So, that's why, while I understand what you're after in terms of ITE, I'm looking at it as to what drives the need for customer parking. It isn't the restrooms, and it isn't the storage, it's the retail area. So, that's why. And your ordinance, I looked it up before, it's actually, it says one space for each dispenser. So, I think our requirement is slightly less. I think it's, what is it we have? I think our requirement is actually 13, not 15. I think Tyler used four. Correct, Tyler? For the assumed disp-
Fueling position, I did.
Yeah, he did it by fueling position. Your ordinance language is dispenser. So, there's two fewer spaces we need. But that's my opinion why this works. It requires less parking than the repair bays do.
I'm not necessarily disputing your claims. I'm just pointing out that it's based solely on your opinion. This operator doesn't have, I believe, not a robust enough portfolio where you can refer on operational needs from another site or similar site.
Oh, I can. This applicant has, I believe, 31 stations. He might be up to 32.
And that's great, but none of that presented.
We, well, I'm presenting it now. We did a site for him identical to this in P-Pac Gladstone. Very small site, existing building, existing dispensers, and I am fairly certain we wound up with eight parking spaces.
You were approved for eight, right? Is that what you're saying?
Correct, correct.
But that doesn't necessarily match the operational need of the facility.
I don't think the investment would be made to rehabilitate the site, and I know we had the architetchers at the last hearing. It's an expensive upgrade, and I don't know of an applicant that intentionally puts considerable money into a renovation, knowing that it's functionally obsolete. So, a lot of times, I defer to the operators as to if you think you have enough and they have experience with 32 stations, I sometimes have to listen to that. They're the guys writing the check. But from my own independent reviews, I'm doing a poor job of conveying, eight is more than excessive.
You just said, he cuts the checks, so you're going to agree with what he says he needs. I'm for this. I want to believe you. I want to approve this, but it's, there's no evidence that supports the variance other than professional opinion, when there are literature out there that could be referred to.
And I'm referring to empirical studies we've done independently outside of his operations with Mobile Shell, Exxon, where we've gone through this 40 years ago when bay conversions were first in vogue, and repairs have only become more complicated as vehicles have become more complicated. So, there are fewer and fewer. I think we also did one in Raritan Borough that also had a seven or eight parking spaces. I'm going by memory. That was approved within the past year and a half. Bay conversion, clean up the site, get rid of the junk vehicles and mufflers stored outside, and make it fit better with at least aesthetics.
Planning testimony. But I don't have any other questions. Thank you.
You're welcome.
In your traffic study, did you do a traffic count on Elizabeth Avenue?
Yes.
And how would you describe that? Moderate, heavy, light?
I characterize Elizabeth as, you know, I'm the traffic guy, and I'm used to dealing with Route 22 and 78 and several thousand vehicles per hour on state highways. Elizabeth Avenue has about 500. So, I would consider it light, but at least moderate, whereas Cedar, by contrast, is carrying 130.
All right. I have a little bit of a hard time viewing this as a comparable site to one in P-Pac Gladstone, right? And I don't think, I don't think that's a comparable situation. The second thing is, as you mentioned, you have an applicant making a significant investment. From my point of view, I would look at that as the idea, him making that investment and that he's going to try and improve the volume.
Correct.
And I think that the traffic on Elizabeth Avenue, I don't know what your 500 is based on, but it's significantly busier than it was five years ago, maybe more, maybe busier than what the normal percentage of growth has been because of all the growth that's been taking place here. And I don't want to have reservations about, you know, we're starting off here with this property, this application designed to fit a certain size clientele, let's say, and it's going to outgrow it, and it's in the residential section. The other reservation I have is with the parking. You referred to the parking on Cedar Avenue and the idea that the driveway is going to be eliminated and it's going to be curbed. What's happening in my, from, I'm wondering, is you've actually created more on-street parking that's available for this use, which isn't really permissible to be considered when we're talking about this application, because people do use Cedar Avenue now, and the only reason it works a little bit is that it's a repair facility, so those cars come and they sit. Now, we're talking about a operation that has a retail component where those cars will use Cedar Avenue. They may see, they may not visibly see a parking space from Elizabeth Avenue, since there are not very many of them, and as I think you mentioned, this site's filled with different restrictions and limitations and different things that you can do. So, the easy thing will be to drive onto Cedar Avenue and park there. You know, and I can see, I haven't seen, haven't had heard anything that convinces me that that won't be part of this application. That concerns me.
It's currently part of the site. I mean, it's occurring today.
But that doesn't mean, what's happening there shouldn't be happening now and shouldn't have been happening now. It doesn't mean that we, as a board, need to condone it to continue to happen.
And what we've done is listened to the input at the prior hearing and from staff, and have closed all access points, vehicular access points on Cedar. To me, that's a step in a positive direction. If we look at, if we look at the plan, Tyler and I spent a fair amount of time looking at this. I can't fit another space on this site.
Well, see, I think that's where our problem is. I'm still looking, and I know the planner's coming, for proof that this is a suitable site for this use. And I'm wondering about that because in somebody's testimony here, it was mentioned that you have fuel dispensers, you have a triangular shape, you have a small property, you have all kinds of restrictions that dictate how this site plan has to be constructed and dictate how the circulation plan is going to work. And I think when we get to it, we're going to need to spend some time on suitability. And I take this liberty speaking now because I think we got, as Rich said, quite a bit of planning testimony involved with the traffic report here. Any other questions for this witness?
I have a, I know you talked about the, what the current trip generation is, but there's another whole section in the report where they talk about trip generation and why it's, how it's going to increase when you change it from a, from a repair station to a convenience store. And it seems like those are the numbers, those are the traffic generation numbers that we should be looking at, not necessarily what is, but what is likely to occur.
Sure. Obviously, the investment is made in an effort to recapture that through increased sales. We haven't disguised that. We have included estimates in our traffic report for that very growth, and whether it's attributed to new development in the community or just this site becomes more attractive for the traffic that's already passing, yes, the applicant hopes to improve his business. In this instance, and I want to go back to one thing, because I don't know whether my partner testified to it at the last hearing, but there's a note in our report, handwritten note, it's not written in the report, that she looked at ITE Sixth Edition Parking Generation, and there are two standards. There's a suburban standard, I think arguably this could qualify as suburban, and then there is dense urban, you know, Jersey City, Hoboken. I don't believe that's applicable. ITE says for a store with four fueling positions is eight spaces. In a dense urban area, it's only five spaces, and that is consistent with my testimony. So, I was remiss for not catching that earlier. It's just in her notes, and again, I don't know if that was covered at the last hearing. In terms of the parking, the objective has been to take it off of Cedar. That's what the focus of this application is, by eliminating a use that typically is considered a nuisance. This is an alternative that, in my opinion, is superior from traffic and circulation. We know that there will be an increase, but our study has said that that increase is not going to affect levels of service or operating conditions on Elizabeth Ave. They're still at a very high level of service, B, as in boy, even with a traffic increase. The whole nature of the convenience store is, for decades, snacks were provided at gas stations through vending machines, cigarette machines, Coke machines, candy machines. Over the years, that has evolved to putting those components inside a building for better customer experience. So, this is doing nothing more, and certainly there's, I don't want to play attorney in this case, I've played planner enough, but there has been cases that have acknowledged that the sale of snacks and the like at service stations is an accessory component of a typical service station. So, as you get into site suitability, if this were a vacant site, the burden of proof here would be extraordinary. But the fact that there's an operating service station here with a component that may or may not be perceived as being less desirable for the community, I'll leave that to you in your deliberations. But the whole effort here is to make it look better, to make it aesthetically more compatible with the surrounding neighborhood through the architectural materials. There's brick, there's clapboard siding, there's a peaked roof with asphalt shingles. It, you know, I'm not an architect, but to me, the renderings look like a house, and I think that's what the objective was, to get rid of this rather bunker-looking building that's just white masonry into something a bit more harmonious with the neighborhood. But yes, we do expect more traffic. That's the nature of the application. But it's not of such a level that'll materially impact the neighborhood, and more importantly, with the proposed improvements on Cedar, there will be a positive traffic benefit to the neighborhood.
Any other questions?
Yeah, like a clarification here, right here.
Oh, sorry.
Yes, so, you said it's an improvement for the traffic?
Yes.
But you expect that there would be more parking on Cedar?
No.
No.
It's available. I want to have my testimony be very clear. It occurs today as part of this site's operation. By the proposal we have on the site and what we've done as far as looking at parking sufficiency, in my professional opinion, all the parking required for this site can be accommodated on the site. However, we know that perhaps neighbors are accustomed to using Cedar for parking, and some of them may find it more convenient to park on Cedar rather than go all the way around the block to come into the site. We're not relying on it, we're not counting on it, but it exists. So, I don't expect that there will be an increase. I expected it would be a decrease in the amount of parking that occurs on Cedar. And I know it's in Mr. Healy's report. I didn't count the number of vehicles, but there are some photographs appended to his report, and we have some other street view photographs. There must be five or six cars parked on the street now, today, from current imagery as the Google vehicle drives by. We expect that to no longer be part of, here, okay, thank you, Tyler.
Well, those are part of the service station.
Correct. This is part of the site today. We assume that they're either vehicles awaiting repair, they're parked on the sidewalk, they're along the curb frontage, they're doubled up. We think the community would want to see that practice remedied.
Yeah, I'm sure the community does too.
This is the opportunity for that, Mr. Chair.
I have to also say, I've traveled down that street probably a dozen times since this application came before us, and I can honestly sit up here and say, except for the cars waiting to be repaired at that service station, I have never seen a car parked on Cedar Avenue. They're in driveways. So, what you're, if what you're trying to accomplish is to get those cars that are being repaired off the street, that may happen, but if they're replaced by people using the facility, I don't consider that an improvement, because there's basically little to note. I know it seems hard to say it in this day and age, but I've never seen a car parked on that street other than at that service station. So, like I said, to me, that's not an improvement. You're just replacing, you're actually replacing stationary vehicles with moving ones, because those people are going to come, park, go in, come out, and leave, and they're not going to turn around on Cedar Avenue. They'll go to the end of it and go out to Elizabeth Avenue, one way or the other, whichever way they come. So, you are, de facto, increasing the traffic on Cedar.
Respectfully, I don't agree with that. My testimony is, we have sufficient parking on the site to accommodate it. If a neighbor at 10 o'clock at night or 8 o'clock at night decides they want to park because they can on Cedar and walk right in and then go back home without getting on Elizabeth, from a traffic person's perspective, that's a good thing.
Well, those neighbors, if you're talking about true neighbors, would probably be walking.
Some might, some. The old joke is, the most coveted spots at a health club are the ones next to the door. People don't like to walk. I don't know why. It's, we're an automobile-centric society. We're improving, but we still tend to, people like the convenience. So, I would expect, again, this to be remedied. This photograph that we're showing that is associated with the repair operations, this will all be landscaped, this will be buffered. will all be landscaped, this will be buffered, and it will be cleaned up, the building design will be substantially enhanced from what you see in this photograph. I can't make the site bigger. There's no available property to expand it, which wouldn't be permitted anyway. So that's, it's a balance.
Doesn't that speak, as a planner, doesn't that speak to the suitability of the site for the use?
Because it's already a service station and because it's already functioning as that, I will let the planner address that. But in my opinion, that is why it is perfectly suited for the proposal.
It's perfectly suitable, in your opinion, for us to continue to allow something to exist that shouldn't be there?
I look at it.
That's what you're saying.
I look at it as if this application is not favorably considered, the station isn't closing. So it's a balance of which is more preferable. That's what I said. It's an imperfect site and circumstance. The attempt here is to make it better, and I'll say prettier, and that's subjective, but to enhance it and make it modern and more compatible with the surrounding neighborhood.
All right. I'm sorry, Cheryl, for jumping in on you. Do you have any other?
No, that was, that was pretty much it. I just was trying to get the gist of benefits overall for this application. That's what I'm trying, and I know you're not, that's what the planner is essentially testimony.
Correct. From the traffic engineer's perspective, the closing of two driveways on Cedar, absolute benefit. To remove the parking that's depicted on this photograph, associated with repairs, disabled vehicles, that one large vehicle, that white vehicle, it's, I assume, blocking the sidewalk. It's, it's, it's an issue that can be fixed with this application. So from a traffic engineering perspective, I find that the improvements in terms of closing those driveways, they make it an easier, more well-defined onsite circulation, and they eliminate, eliminate two points of conflict on Cedar. Headlight glare, things of that nature, all of that goes away. So that, I think the planner can further expand on the benefits of the application. But this is a little different in the use variance in that the site is there, it's a functioning gas station, it's not even closed. So it's, what's more preferable? And that's a rhetorical question, but that's the, that's the essence of this application.
Gary, if I can too, the photographs, the photograph that's being shown, excuse me, I mean, those vehicles that are there to be serviced are certainly sitting along Cedar for a much longer period of time than the typical convenience store customer, correct?
It's a photograph, so I don't know.
Well, but assuming, since there are vehicles waiting to be repaired, one could logically deduce that they're going to be there a lot longer along the side of that road than somebody running in buying a soda.
But just on this photograph alone, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven cars, and I can't see beyond that. I've, I've seen other photographs, I've seen more vehicles parked, but it is something that, as I described, is a nuisance that can be remedied with this application.
Okay, any other questions? All right, again, we'll open to the public, anyone who wants to ask this witness a question based on his testimony. We would need your name and address.
O'Connell, 25 Spring Street. Just listening to it, I just walked in. I don't agree with this man, in my opinion, that if I would be his client, because I ride my bike by there, I drive my car past there, and if I saw something on Cedar, I would park there, run in, run out. This gentleman here spoke about the cars will be gone, you know, he made the argument that the cars would no longer be there. But in minute one, I show up, okay? I run in, get my soda, walk out. Minute three, another person comes to my spot and moves in there. So in a way, there will always be a car there, people walking in and out. But if you do approve this application, put your money where your mouth is. Put yellow curbing and put no parking signs on Cedar Grove, and that would be, you know, an option.
We don't take exception to that. Unfortunately, other than, and I'm not sure who the elected officials are, that is for the mayor and council.
Are you sure?
A hundred percent.
That can be part of your, that can be part of your application, isn't it?
It can't be. We don't own the road. It's a legislative act that only the governing body can adopt. Now, the planning board can make that recommendation, but this applicant takes no exception to that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll close the public. Next witness.
Thank you for your time.
Can I have two minutes before we start, Ms. Chairman?
Yep. We'll take a two-minute would be, again, ready for the next witness.
Thank you. Do you swear or firm testimony about to give before this board is truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Just state your name and spell your last name, Faraka, please.
My name is Cameron, last name is Black, B-L-A-C-K.
Thank you.
Make sure you speak directly into the mic.
Stay real close to the mic.
Mr. Black, you are a professional planner, correct?
Correct.
And could you let the board know your educational background, the status of your license, as well as your experience in testifying in planning matters here in New Jersey?
Yes, sir. I went to the College of New Jersey, got my degree in Urban Planning Studies and Sociology minor in Environmental Studies. I went to graduate school at the Blaustein Urban Planning School at Rutgers University, received my master's in urban planning. I've been a licensed professional planner for Jersey City for, it'll be nine years in February of 2026.
Have you testified outside of your experience or tenure at Jersey City?
Yes, sir. I've testified in land use boards outside of Jersey City, Egg Harbor Township, yes.
Okay. And you've been accepted as a professional planner in both Jersey City, obviously, as well as those other municipalities?
Yes.
And the status?
I think we can expect.
Okay, thank you. So Cameron, you've been a participant here in the audience. We are looking for, and we'll start with the D1 variance. What's your opinion as to the appropriateness of that variance relief being granted for this proposal?
Yes, so I don't want to belabor a lot of the planner testimony that we've already heard, but when looking at a use variance like this, under Medici, what you'll do is, you'll look to see that the site is improving and coming closer to the intent and purpose of your zone plan and master plan. And I can firmly say with confidence that this site is an improvement and will be brought into closer conformance with your zone plan and your master plan. Specifically, your zone, it encourages attractive building designs, good landscaping, efficient public-private development, preventing sprawl and blight. And we've already heard here how the existing use has been somewhat of a blight, and this change in use would reduce that. We would also see improvements to stormwater. It would be percolating through landscaping and collected onsite more appropriately. There would be an improvement to the air light and space of surrounding neighborhoods, capturing particulates in the landscaping, and reducing noise to the adjacent property owners. Overall, it's my professional opinion that this would be a dramatic improvement to the public's general health, welfare, and well-being.
Now, the, there's case law out there, specifically the Burbridge case, that talks about aesthetic improvements also being one of the special reasons that would justify a use variance, correct?
Yes, exactly. So with non-conforming uses, what they look to do is mitigate some of those negative criteria that you see onsite. And here, specifically, we have an existing auto body, mechanical car repair site, which we've heard already, you know, can be noisy with the power tools and equipment. Again, it would be a decrease in the intensity of use and a more appropriate use for the surrounding neighborhood. You know, hypothetically, theoretically, the neighborhood could walk to the site if they needed a snack or a Band-Aid and walk home. After all, walkability is encouraged in the state master plan. So I believe that covers that.
Now, the use currently is pre-existing, it's non-conforming. And when you had spoken earlier about this becomes perhaps more conforming or more compatible, it's still a, it's still not a permitted use, correct?
Correct.
So how does that, how does this change from an auto body repair shop to a convenience store kind of become more compatible or less non-conforming when that use is still not permitted in the zone?
Well, as planners, we look at it as intensity of use, and we would define the auto body mechanical repair site as a high intensity. And the convenience store here would be dramatically lower intensity and would accompany the site in a way that we see used around the state ubiquitously.
How do you, right here, how do you define the term intensity? Because I look at this particular site as having maybe one guy at the gas pump and maybe two guys working in the garages to work on cars. And hmm, once in a while, as the other traffic engineer planner said, the, it's not a very busy station. But if, I know that if you, just from the traffic information, I know that if you, if we allow this, that there's going to be a lot more people coming into the station to use not only the gasoline but also the convenience store lure. It's going to become, many more people are going to be coming across that site. And for me, that defines intensity, not whether some guy is in a, in a building banging away on somebody's disc brakes. So I don't agree, I don't, well, you know what, it's not so much that I don't agree, but I don't understand how you're defining intensity. Could you give me a help there?
Yes, so in planning zoning land use, you'll delineate uses according to intensity in ways that a auto body mechanic shop would be considered industrial potentially. So we have a retail convenience store, you wouldn't consider it to be borderline industrial like a mechanical auto body shop would be, you know, you have.
Keep your voice up or closer to the mic.
You have to dispose of contaminated toxic waste potentially onsite. You're not containing, you know, those hazardous materials like you would at a convenience store where you're just going to dispose trash regularly. So those are the things taken into consideration. I understand your concern, but based off of case law, this is, this is how we would treat it.
Which case law? Which case law addresses that intensity issue?
I would have to refer to my MLUL and look at the state law, but off cuff, I don't have the answer for.
So part of what we, when we're trying to get a use variance is, we also look at the negative impacts. And clearly, the majority of the board believes that the potential increase of traffic, whether it's foot traffic or vehicular traffic in and out of a convenience store, would be a negative. What's your opinion as to whether that is? And more importantly, is that perhaps outweighed by the positive aspects of this?
So the negative criteria here, planning, we don't find any detriment to your zoning or master plan. In fact, your master plan encourages the commercial and industrial development in areas with access to major regional highways and in the established areas. This is an established, this area's been established, it's an existing non-conforming. The site suitability is there. The improvements are coming. It's.
Can you show me where in our master plan it encourages us to approve a D1 variance for use like this in a R10 zone?
So you don't specifically call that out. However, there are implications that you want to improve the economics of your municipality and encourage retail and commercial uses, again, in established areas. And this is an established area, it's been here for.
What do you mean by established area? Established as what?
This being established as an existing use since approximately the 1960s.
But it's established as an automobile service station, right? That's not the application. I just don't understand what, I just don't understand the terminology, the terminology that it's, that it's established and what that, where that's going. I just, I just don't understand the nature of the testimony.
I'm afraid I, I feel like I've expanded all I can. It's an existing non-conforming use. And, you know, I can read the room, I understand that you want to hear more about traffic counts, and I can't provide that.
Let me get to the question, a question I'm struggling with too. It sounds like a lot of your testimony is talking about an expansion of a non-conforming use.
No, that's not what we're saying.
Well, he mentioned Burbridge, and he's mentioned.
No, Burbridge, though, was for the aesthetics, it wasn't for an expansion of a pre-existing non-conforming use.
Okay, I mean, that, this is a D1 use variance for the convenience store, that's what's being added here. You have to prove particular suitability. I haven't heard particular, I haven't heard testimony addressing, planning testimony addressing a particular suitability. I've heard we're getting rid of problems and some other things. I haven't heard testimony about particular suitability for this site as a gas station and a convenience store.
I can happily expand upon that. The site is undersized, it is irregular, it is abutting your B1 zone, which would permit this use that is proposed. The site has operated as a gas station for decades. You're looking at meeting criteria of the MLULG to provide sufficient space and appropriate locations for a variety of commercial and open space for the public and private in accordance with respective environmental requirements. You know, you are eliminating the curb cut, so you're promoting Purpose A, which is to promote the general welfare of the public, and those property owners will now have a vegetative buffer there so they can not only remove the blight onsite but decrease traffic. You're reducing the impervious coverage, Purpose A. Purpose G, this being an undersized, odd-shaped lot right near a major highway, it, in all likelihood, would not make for the most attractive site for residential. And a gas station convenience store? And a gas station convenience store would be, in fact, closer to what your master plan would ask for, which is, again, encouraging commercial uses near your arterial roads. I don't believe there is any negative criteria to defend. You are entirely making improvement to the public and you are bringing the site into closer alignment with the zone and your master plan. That, that is my professional planner testimony on this site.
Any board questions?
I'm sorry, can you just summarize again what, when you say, so this is, again, it's a nonconforming use, but it's an R10 zone. You're, you're keeping the gas station, adding a convenience store. It's a single family residential zone. How does that bring it closer to the R10 zone?
So in the purposes of your zoning for residential, you highlight quality development to attract good building designs, good landscaping, and good private development preventing sprawl and blight. This would improve landscaping. This would get rid of blight. This would not create sprawl.
But that's, that's, again, I'm sorry, but that's not answering my question. Those are not the standards for the R10 zone. The R10 zone is a single family zone on quarter acre lots. That, that's the intent of the R10 zone. So how does adding a gas station bring this site close? That's been your testimony a few times-
No, no, the gas station's there. The gas station's there.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'll, I'll correct that. How does adding a convenience store, thank you, how does adding a convenience store bring this closer to the intent of the R10 zone? Because that's what you've been saying, but then you bring up other things, the intent of the R10 zone, single family homes on, on quarter acre lots.
So the community benefits, I firmly believe outweigh any detriments to the zone. And, and that is, well, the, the site is existing and the, the site suitability is, is there, you know? Yeah, I'm, I'm-
You know, philosophically, like you keep saying, the gas station is, it's a nonconforming use and it's existing. So adding a convenience store philosophically means that we're, we're expanding a nonconforming use. Now, we're expanding a nonconforming use onto a property that's having difficulty handling the use that's there and for lack of better words, that's not expanded. How is any of this benefiting Franklin, the neighborhood, or the R10 zone? Why is this site suitable for this kind of a use? I mean, one thing you mentioned is proximity to a highway. It's true. It sits next to 287. That's a border there between the zones. But you can't get on 287 without driving a mile and a half, so how is that an advantage or a reason to approve this?
So-
Give us something we can approve.
I, I feel like I'm beating a dead horse here, but I-
But, but the, and Cameron, the purpose I of the municipal land use law talks about a desirable visual environment. I mean, forgetting the traffic and everything else, I mean, aesthetically, the improvements proposed to the building certainly would further purpose I. Would you agree?
Undoubtedly. And stormwater improvements and air, light, space.
But knowing that this property is in the R10 zone, which is residential, the building proposed, is that more compatible aesthetically with the R10 zone than what's out there now?
Correct.
So the, would that go in furtherance to what Mr. Healy had talked about? I mean, does that, from an aesthetic standpoint, make this a more compatible with the, the R10 permitted uses, which is only residential?
Absolutely.
Now, with regards to the, the traffic, the, this is a service station, automobile repair, correct?
Correct.
I mean, theoretically, if Jiffy Lube wanted to use the space, it could, correct?
That's correct, yes.
And, I mean, I know you're not a traffic guy, but certainly an automobile repair business such as that would probably generate more traffic than what's being seen there now, correct?
Correct. And anecdotally, you go-
Is that beyond his expertise?
No.
Probably generate more traffic than what we've seen-
Well, I can ask Mr., I can ask Mr. Dean the same question.
Well-
I can, you know, look, at the end of the day, and, and, you know, I, I get where you guys come, if you don't buy the fact that, and you would rather see a crummy looking automobile service station because you don't get as much traffic, then quite frankly, you know, we're, we're wasting our time, to be honest. I mean, and I don't, I don't mean, you know, I'm not angry, I'm not bitter, but that's the reality of it. I mean, what, what you're getting here, presumably what we thought was, was an improvement aesthetically, getting those, those vehicles on, if, if, if the paramount concern is the traffic that this new nonconforming use would generate, you know, you're right, it will. I mean, there are probably more people come to this site to buy a Coke than they will be to get their disc brakes changed. And if that's the driving concern, then you know what, we might as well end right now.
Okay. Thank you. I guess you guys don't like this.
I'm undecided. I don't know if that's the, the single driving concern, but it, it's a concern. The aesthetics are important, but you can't say that the town wants something that's not good for it in general just so they can ride by and say, we like the way it looks. I don't think anybody likes the way it looks now. I don't, I don't want to justify that either, but I don't know about the rest of the board, but I haven't heard real justification that you can hang your hat on, for me anyway, at this point, to approve it. I don't know what else to tell you.
Understood.
I just want to add, I, I'm just not hearing that aesthetics is enough to justify adding another nonconforming use. It's already in existence. The cars are already there. The biggest argument I'm hearing is it's going to look better.
Well, it's it's on.
But if we're adding a nonconforming use, to me, that's not, that is not closer to what the goal is. That, that is one aspect of it, but I just feel like hanging that one component on a reason to approve, I'm just not convinced.
Understood. And we're not, we're not really adding, we would argue we're substituting one for the other, but I, I get your, what your point is, so.
I think what we're attempting to do, we're attempting to ask you how we can okay this, but we all do respects to everybody. We, we haven't heard it, so I agree with Cheryl.
I think would be, maybe we should open to the public and get that over with and see what, what happens there and, and reflect a little bit.
Understood.
All right, so we will open the public at this point and you can do either make your statement concerning the application, you know, and/or ask questions of the, of the planner.
Good evening, Chairman, Board members. Chairman-
Put, put your name on the record.
My name is Joe Danielson. Has it been part of testimony or the application, how long the applicant has owned the property? And if not, could you please ask the applicant that question?
Ask them what again?
How long the applicant has owned the property?
You can ask him. He can-
How long has your client?
Thirteen.
Thirteen. Thirteen years, okay. We could stress that number. First of all, Mr. Healy, thank you for questioning the mention of case law. That was not in any report that I read.
May I ask, are you a lawyer?
No, I play one on TV.
Oh, okay. No, I was just curious.
I practice law though, but I'm not an attorney.
Well, no, no, I didn't know if you were here representing somebody or representing yourself.
No, I'm just a member of the public, sir.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
No, you're welcome.
And Mr. Prokanic, thank you for calling out the reference to the absence of tables and comments that just weren't supported. In your deliberations of the benefits outweighs the detriment, I think you have to start with the fact, well, let me just also establish, I've, I live in the neighborhood next to this site and I've lived there my entire life and still live on the street I was born, which is about four blocks away. And from that vantage point to my west into Southbound Brook, there is three convenience stores about a mile or less away. To my east, there are two convenience stores in that direction, all less than a mile away. So five convenience stores, possibly six, but five. So my neighborhood and the neighborhoods around us have a lot of convenience stores. So need or should go way into your deliberations. For the benefit of the board, I would like to share some photographs. So the, the applicant-
Well, can I just interrupt you? I apologize, I'm, I'm to your left. Are we at a point in the hearing where we're taking testimony from the public or is this only questions?
He's speaking as a member of the public, yeah.
But we're, we're open-
I'm giving commentary, not testimony.
Oh, I'm sorry, but we're, we're not, we're past just the question for the planner? And then do we need to mark?
This is, this is the-
It should be sworn.
Yeah, I just, I just want to make sure we're-
Why don't we swear, man? If he's going to testify.
Counselor, I appreciate that, but I'm giving public commentary and I'm not here as a witness.
Well, you are.
Does this make me witness? Okay.
I know, you, you just distributed exhibits, so.
All right.
Raise your right hand, thank you.
Yes, sir. All right.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give before this board is true, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And can you state your last, your, state your name and spell your last name for the record?
Joe Danielson, D-A-N-I-E-L-S-E-N.
Thank you.
Okay, the first photograph, they should all be in the same order.
And, and we're going to mark these as exhibits, so we'll just call them for simplicity O1 through, how many photographs do you have, Joe?
Approximately 11.
Okay, O1 through O11.
Right. So this, the first photograph is of a vendor booth for the gas operation that was taken out of commission a number of years ago when they replaced the pumps. And this is sitting along Cedar Street. Many years ago, this was put there. Also notice the truck that's parked on the sidewalk that is in disrepair and blighted with weeds growing, leaves sitting, rubbish on the ground. Also, the next photograph, again, the, the truck obstructing the sidewalk that's cracked and disrepair and blighted, and the other vantage point in the opposite direction, that booth along with storage containers containing, one would have to assume hazardous materials such as used oil and other garbage.
I, I object only because I don't know if you went out there and test, did you take these photos, by the way?
I, I took those photos with my Samsung Galaxy, yes, 22. The next photograph is of a shed that's behind the property on the side of Cedar Grove. They dilapidated, rusted out garbage with overflow, shed with overflowing garbage and assorted used and new tires and lawnmower. Look to the right of that, bottom right of that photograph, more garbage. The next photograph are the two gas pumps that we're taking out. Now, I'm going to tell you how long these gas pumps have been there. They've been there $2.19 a gallon ago, right? You can see the slum that this landlord has maintained. And that's just with this. The next photograph is the, the garbage container. Let's enjoy that out in the middle, not in the middle, on the side of the street, outside its container, overflowing. And then let's enjoy looking at the brand new house built next to it. Husband and wife and their children are beautiful. They sent their thank you.
I object.
Trust you? Well, they, they did, that's my, what do you, what do you object to?
It's hearsay. You, I mean, whatever they said, you, you can't testify to that.
Okay. All right, so the next photograph is my vantage point on the street looking up Cedar So that's a 25 mile an hour road. This is a dog leg intersection, but what I'm bringing to your attention is the peak of that road, which happens, the peak of that road is about at the location of the front of that building. Beyond that, you cannot see. That's approximately 100 yards away from the curb I'm standing on across the intersection. And moving my body and the camera angle over to Elizabeth Avenue that equal but the, close to the same point opposite that side of the intersection, which gives me a vantage point of both Cedar Street and Elizabeth Avenue. Now, the peak point of Elizabeth Avenue is a little further back. Let's call that, though I didn't measure it, but I'm, I know I'm pretty close, about 150 yards. That road is 45 mile an hour at the speed limit. Now, I know you all drive the speed limit, but coming out of this intersection today, sitting at that intersection, you're going to wait during the high peak hours. You have-
I object, he's not a traffic consultant.
While standing at that intersection, assuming that you have traffic coming left or right, that traffic coming from the north traveling south, you have less than two seconds-
I object again, it's traffic-
Well, hold on a second. He's lived in the neighborhood his whole life. I think he can testify to what he's witnessed. He's not trying to do an opinion.
It's algebra.
Okay.
All right? A car traveling at 45 miles an hour, 200 yards is about two seconds. You could do the math. You objected to math?
I, I object to your ability to make that statement. No, I, but, but I've been overruled, so say whatever you want.
Okay. You have two seconds or less.
And what's the speed limit you quoted?
45 miles an hour.
Okay.
Okay. So now you have two roads conversion at one place. If now you're actually adding- If you, now you're actually adding trip generation traffic on or off that site, you have to imagine that part of that is going to be difficult to see tra, uncommon traffic. The bottom of that road, you should also know, is under 287, and then it goes up again, and the, the sightline is also obstructed by the bridge of 287, making it even more di, difficult. If this be, did become a convenience store, you're going to have traffic, more cars on and off that lot, trying to go in and out just with a limited sightline view, making it more dangerous, but it really doesn't stop there.
Objection.
What's going to happen, and actually, can you, Mark, can you bring the site plan up again? The, the three spots, parking spots, that they have at, at the very point of this property. Now, and if you look at this photo, it'll be right next to the weeds that have never been picked or mowed, or the garbage, or the broken sidewalk. And after 13 years, you should know, never once did they do landscaping, cut the weeds, shovel the snow, nothing. So if you think they're going to do it now, in the future, you've given them a convenience store, you're foolish to believe it.
Objection.
What they've done in the past, they're going to do in the future.
Objection.
So what I noticed about those three, what is your objection to that?
Because you're making comments assuming that because he didn't do it then, he's going to do, you have no idea.
Okay, and neither does your, the assumptions your engineer has put in his report that are outside his scope of his state license.
Who?
Your, your traffic engineer made assumptions.
Yeah, but, but they're experts, and they're permitted to do that, they can offer comments.
But, but they didn't support them in the reports.
Yeah, okay, fine.
They didn't support them.
You know what, let's go.
It's case law.
Let's go.
It's case law.
Yeah, all right.
So let's look at the, the three spots on, on the bottom. So assuming somebody parked in that spot, you're also going to assume that they're, they're going to walk through the traffic lane of coming in or out to the right of the filling station, right? I'm not, I don't want to assume that. Also, now for them to back out of those three spots, they have to cross that travel lane where cars slowing down from at least 45 miles an hour are entering the lot. That's a dangerous situation. So those three parking spots should not be located there. Also, I also had questions of the, the planner, your planner, right?
Correct.
You said the site would be improved. Why have they not made improvements now, landscaping, beautification, basic maintenance? Why would they now start doing it after 13 years?
I can't answer that question.
No, you cannot. Aesthetics, you mentioned aesthetics. Why don't they improve aesthetics now? No. You said the, you mentioned that the noise that the service station makes, are, is that within your scope of expertise? Counselor?
What was that?
He, he mentioned the noise that auto shop makes, is that within his scope of expertise?
It's an anecdotal assumption with the permitted use as it is.
Okay. What's the typical decibel level created when a door, a car door slams shut or closes shut? Can we say over 100 decibels?
No, you can't, you can't say, he, he doesn't know.
He doesn't know, okay. So how many, currently, how many service bays are there in this shop?
I defer to the traffic. Three.
Okay. I'm gonna tell you, there's four. Three facing the lot, one facing Elizabeth Avenue, there's four. So let's say four vehicles can be in that shop. I happen to know anywhere from two cars to 15 cars. So we're thinking 15 cars a day, that's 15 people, bring their cars there and back, maximum. 15 doors, 15 doors closing, opening, closing. Will the convenience store generate more cars opening and closing at the expected decibel level?
I, I can't answer that question.
Can you look at this photograph, it'd be the second to the last one, where it shows the house owned by one of, one of our residents firefighters, Michael Schmoggi, his wife and children live there. Will that, will Mr. Schmoggi hear more doors slamming shut with a convenience store, or would he hear more doors shut from a service station where someone just brings their car there, they get a ride home, they come back? A convenience store would have to obviously operate more, with more customer arrivals than 15 cars, right?
I can only testify to my experience with landscape architecture and the reduction in off-site noise we, we imply when improving sites, so I, I can't answer that question.
I find, I find that disturbing because you testified, your testimony, about site intensity, site use intensity. Why are you running from me right now?
He's not running from you, he's answering the question.
I, I want, I'm on the score on intensity, because I just, I, I just mentioned, now I even helped your case a little bit, I, I went from three bays to four bays, right? Bringing those two comparisons closer. And I know, based upon my personal experience, I could testify on, when I had my car worked on oil change, tires, you know, fixing stuff, I dropped my car off, and then I'd come back and pick it up. But a convenience store trip is much more rapid in arrival, in my experience, in my observation, and you spoke to intensity.
These questions are getting into the science of decibels and door closing and.
My question was on intensity. I don't think I'm believing.
You could argue that someone gets out while their car's getting pumped full of gas, they go get a soda, come back, it'd be the same number of times that the car door opens and closes as in.
Can I ask you a question? Maybe you don't know, but maybe someone else on your team does, but when measuring sound, is there not a minimum length of time the sound needs to occur before it's measured based on NJDEV requirements?
I would have to defer to the team.
If you want an answer, I have somebody that can answer it.
Impulse sound levels do not qualify, it has to be a sustained, a sustained sound level. I would also submit that the sound attributed to the service station, car doors closing, are no different than what is customarily found from vehicles parked in the neighbors' driveways. It is a sound endemic to a residential setting, a commercial setting, attributed to cars being started or passengers entering or exiting their vehicles.
All right, one second. What qualifies him to make these statements?
I'd be happy to answer that, Mr. Chairman. I'm a licensed professional engineer, I have.
That's what we need to have on them?
I have been qualified as an expert in New Jersey DEP sound level standards, I've served as an expert testing and evaluating sound levels for commercial uses such as car washes.
Okay, that's fine, just so we have something.
Certainly.
And, and then just one question, I, I thought Elizabeth was 35, could you clarify if it's 35 or 45?
It's 35, that the neighbor is incorrect, there's also abundant sight distance looking north and south on Elizabeth Avenue, and just for identification purposes, it's not Cedar Street, it's Cedar Avenue.
And that's substantiated by the picture of the speed limit sign?
Yes, correct.
Thank you.
For the record, the avenue-street changes when it hits the border. Depending on how long you've been riding your bicycle there, you could get confused. To the engineer, wasn't it in your report where you made assumptions that the auto repair market trend is decreasing with the new technology vehicles?
That, that has been my experience and, and my opinion, correct.
Is that within the scope of your license to make that such an opinion?
I own a car.
So, yes or no, sir, is that in the scope of your license issued by State of New Jersey, and are you testifying now as a non-expert on the matter?
I am tech, testifying as an expert related to traffic engineering, particularly as related to automobile service stations, and I'm buttressing that with 42 years of experience specifically with automobile service stations, and the reasons why small repair facilities are closing at gasoline service stations in favor of convenience stores.
So this is just your personal experience, like my personal experience?
Well, yeah, but, but he can, as an expert.
His is better?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
I've served as a qualified expert in 150 different land use applications for service stations, so yes, I'm qualified.
But would you also agree that the service station being removed could simply be also a function of the property owner getting rid of it and replacing it with a convenience store that's more profitable?
That I can't answer, that's a business decision.
Well, what would you say to an auto repair location, hey, like this one, who's got three to five days waiting, cars waiting, does that seem like that's growing or shrinking? And by the way, he's only been there a few years, so he, he's new.
Yeah.
Is that growing or shrinking?
I, I can't corroborate that testimony, so I, I can't answer your question, there's no foundation for it.
Okay, so let, let me give the board's testimony as a witness that the customer base here is growing, so there's clearly a need for it, and yes, he does park along Cedar and then up. Jim, is that Nassau Street? The, the road that goes along Par, what?
The park is Nassau Street.
What's?
Then Grig, Grig Street goes from Cedar.
Yeah, what's the one?
Mercury.
What?
Mercury.
Mercury, thank you.
It's all life, he's been there.
Faster next time. Along Mercury, he parks up there, that, that's how much needed our area has, that's the amount of need our area has for auto repair. That's a need met here. But he's at liberty to rent that to whoever he wants, and convenience store just doesn't have a need, but a convenience store will. So let me bring up another point to you. A convenience store located here, clearly, it won't be from my neighborhood or the neighborhood of east, west, and south of us, this will be frequented by the 18-wheelers that drive by all day and all night long, the box trucks. Right now, the box trucks that visit this site, many of them park on Elizabeth Avenue. And let me remind you to remember that sightline is very limited, two seconds.
But, but again, I object because you're not qualified to make that statement, so.
What's the appropriate sightline distance?
I don't, I don't know that.
Okay, then don't talk about it, please.
I, I can talk about it because I drove it and I timed it.
Yeah, but that's, that, that's not sufficient to make that statement, that there's insufficient.
What's my statement exactly that you're?
That two seconds is, is all you're going to have, and that's not enough time.
At 45 miles an hour?
And you're also the same, yeah, but it's not, it's posted at 35.
Okay, so, all right, so at the top.
But that's a beauty, in, in the world of traffic, sir, 10 miles is a big difference, okay? So I don't think.
I think, I think that the witness, hold on a second, I think that the witness should stick to the facts that he has observed over the time he's living there, and refrain from rendering opinions as an expert that he's not.
Okay, so what I want the board to join me in anticipating is 18-wheelers, 18-wheeled vehicles will not pull into the spot, they will stop on both sides on the shoulder of Elizabeth Avenue and park there, making that limited sight location even more dangerous. Even more so that my legislative office across the street, and my private office across the street, when I had 10, 20 people there in the parking lot, twice, I was required to hire the police for traffic safety because of the limited sight line of that location, and I'm at the top of the hill. Let me stress that, the police may be hired, traffic safety, because the sightline is so dangerous. And I was happy to do that because I'm all about safety for the people. So, but when you add parked vehicles, commercial, industrial, private passenger, this is going to become a disaster.
I, I, again, I object with the premise that 18-wheelers and box trucks are going to park up and down the street.
How can you object to that?
Because you have no idea if that's going to happen, it's your opinion, but I object, I think your opinion's wrong.
Well, you're a traffic expert.
And by the way, you also said that there's five or six convenience stores in the immediate area, so why would they all start coming here and not go to the other ones?
I was demonstrating the point that the, the need is nil.
Okay, so then there should be no traffic coming in and out of here?
So will your traffic.
Because there's other, there's other options besides this.
Will your traffic expert testify to, to the point?
What point is that?
That 18-wheelers will not stop, park?
No, because it's, it's pure rank speculation.
Wait, hold on, so your engineer and traffic expert can, it's speculation for me, but it's a professional assumption on that?
No, they never testified to that.
They made, they made assumptions, and you said they're allowed to because of their license.
Yeah, but you're making a statement, you're assuming that's going to be the case, but look, keep, keep going, I mean.
We all, we all know that trucks, large ones, will stop, run across the road, walk over the curb, if they can't pull in, they're going to take the convenience of that parking opportunity. And also, now you also have those four new homes right along between Cedar and Elizabeth. Now they're going to be parking in front of those homes. Again, more doors opening and closing, more families disturbed, while they don't even need that convenience store. So this is a quality of life issue, this is an inappropriate application, it's one of the worst I've ever seen, and I'm saying that with 14 years on the planning board, this should not be allowed, and we don't ever reward a slumlord.
I object.
And expect they're going to be a good neighbor.
Any other people wish to speak?
Good evening, Jim Wickman, Somerset, New Jersey. Just, just a few comments that, if I understand correctly, this served, the original service station was built somewhere around 1963 on that location, plus or minus, close enough. When were the zoning laws established in Franklin Township? I believe it was in, somewhere in the 70s where it was really kind of fortified, so, so in all likelihood, that service station was built and, and established long before that was residential, that was farm, whatever it was.
It was 1958, that's when the township first had zoning.
Okay, okay. And, but was that area, what was that zoned at that time?
That, that's a different question, I mean, the zoning morphed and got more complicated and convoluted over time, but, you know, that, that area, my understanding is that that area, I shouldn't speak to that, I shouldn't speak to that, I don't know.
Okay, fair, fair enough, but my, my point being, it was probably there long before there were any considerations of residential zoning versus something, and, and so here it is. And as long as it's there, you, you can't shut it down and say, you can't be a, a not, non-residential zone business in here because it doesn't fit. I, I think that's correct, so it's there, we can accept that. My, my concerns are, and I, I think somewhere in the planning board's report, it, it, it talks about the, the applicant needs to, like, beyond the, the shadow of a doubt, show the importance of granting these variances, and there's a lot of them. The impervious surface, yes, it was 90, now it's 70, it's supposed to be 30%, it was still not close. Eight. Eight parking spots versus 18, still not close. So all of these things, yeah, they moved, but it's still not close. And to jump on board with some of what the previous speaker said, that business has been there for 13 years. It's a dump. The cars are parked on... I don't know who owns that sidewalk. Is that township property? Okay, they're parking vehicles on the township sidewalk. Many times, those vehicles don't have license plates on them. So who's enforcing what's not happening at that site as it exists? There's vehicles parked on the sidewalks. There's junk, as he told you, for however many years they renovated the pumps and the kiosk and the canopy. Well, the stuff that they took out is sitting out on the street, on our residential side of the street, not Somerset County's Elizabeth Avenue. It's on our side. I drive past that place twice a day at least. And unfortunately, I have a problem with going to ShopRite just about every day of the week. So that's a different thing. I drive by that all the time. That stuff's been sitting there. In many instances, not only are the cars parked on Cedar Street, Cedar Avenue, on the curb, on the sidewalk, without license plates. They're also running up the hill on Mercury Street, on the grass, tearing up the grass, for lack of a better term, weeds, whatever it is, creating a mud hole over the curb. And I think that's, technically, I think that's state property on that side from 287. But they're tearing that up. The cars are in the street. And the township's not doing anything to enforce whatever rules may be in place. I know if you don't cut your lawn, they'll come around. If I leave a car in the street without a license plate, they're coming around. And they're going to give me a ticket. It's happened. I've seen it in my neighborhood. But this business runs without a worry in the world about that. There's junk. The cars, they're not... I get it, it's a repair facility, and there's cars that are needing repair. But there's cars that have been there for months, months, sitting on that lot. So the zoning is what it is. It's not compliant. This won't be compliant. But the efforts to try and make it, I just don't see it. I don't see the hardcore, the variances of the impervious surface, the parking. They're just not there. And it doesn't make sense. And I would like to see someone in a township make an effort to enforce the rules on that spot to clean the place up. It's a dump, plain and simple. It's been like that for years. It used to be a beautiful place. Yeah. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Anyone else? Am I all closed to the public? What's your pleasure?
Give me a minute with my client.
Yeah, well, before you go, I had one question, probably of your client. And that is, what does he plan to do in terms of hours of operation of the gas station part of the business and the convenience store part of the business? We can wait until you come back to me at conference.
No, well, he can. He's been put under oath before.
Yeah, you're right.
This is what he testified before.
Good evening, board. Good evening. Yeah, we're planning to do 6 to 9, both sides, both the convenience store and the gas. That is correct. Okay. Very good. Thank you. Seven days a week, I assume?
You mean that?
Yes, okay.
I think for the record to be complete, and Mr. Healy hasn't had a chance to comment. He did raise the issue about the architecture and the compatibility, I believe. And unfortunately, like I said, our architect had a recovery that they're dealing with. So with the board's permission, I'd like to see the matter carried. And I could bring Mr. Byrne back whenever... I doubt we're going to be going in January, given your schedule, but whenever the next meeting available date would be. And we could put that testimony on and then see what happens.
Would the architect be the only witness you were going to?
I may bring back our planner, too.
Okay.
And I will certainly give... I know the question was raised earlier about extending the time and everything. Yeah, we would certainly do that, absolutely.
So are you asking, do you want me to provide you dates that are available?
Yeah, if you have them.
I have them. You can come as early as February 5th. We have another matter that would be heard before you.
That's... February 5th is fine. I don't think we have to...
You're okay with that?
Yeah, February 5th. I think Mr. Byrne should be available on February 5th. Either that, or we can get some...
Bring him in on a gurney.
Yeah. So we'll do February 5th. Tell him that's the date. He's got to get here.
Okay, so then I'll make the announcement that the matter will be carried to February 5th, 2026, at 7:30 PM here at 475 Demont Lane. And no further notification will be needed, as this is the notification. You do need to provide me in writing with an extension.
Yeah, we'll extend it through February 28th.
Yeah, that's fine. An email will do. It doesn't have to be anything fancy. You can just send that to me.
Okay.
All right. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Okay, is there a motion to close?
I move that we close.
A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Meeting adjourned.